I'd like to open the meeting for the Planning Board for February 11th, 2019. Members present, Emmanuel, Ken Buckman, Mark.
You got your mic on? Is the mic turned on?
Yeah, my mic's on. And I'm bad at last names, so let me slide. And our town engineer Charlie Rowley. First order of business, minutes for January 28th. We don't have them in the packet?
No, they're not available yet.
Okay. Let's go on to the A and R for Borrego Solar Farm, 64 Farm of the Market Road.
Hi, Stacy Minahan with Beals &amp; Thomas here with Zach Farkas of Borrego. So, would you like a summary?
Yes, please.
This A and R is similar to the recent solar projects that you've had before you. We're submitted an approval not required plan to establish a parcel for a proposed solar project that you will see later on in your agenda. The main purpose of the A and R lot is to clip back the size of the overall parcel. So along the southerly edge of the parcel, we've pulled the property line in. And then to establish sufficient space to comply with the 50-foot setback for the solar project. So similar to 71 Charlotte Furnace Road that the board had previously heard, this A and R includes land in Carver and as such will be requested to be endorsed by the Carver Planning Board as well.
Ken, we have all paperwork on here.
Yes, it is.
Do you have time to review this?
It's an A and R plan that would seem to comply with the requirements for approval not required. It's got frontage, it's got a lot of area, so I don't think it really requires any further review. The only thing I'd suggest that if you do endorse it tonight, that when it goes to Carver, that you get a copy of the endorsed plan for both towns. I don't know whether you've got one count on the previous one.
Not yet.
Okay. But you certainly need it because without that, the special permit would be in question.
Any questions from the board? Emmanuel?
Is there anything about this project that's different than the last three?
Smaller, but nothing.
Anybody in the audience, any questions?
I want to point out that this creates another lot taken out of this piece. And that there may be a question that the assessors have on the creation of this lot and the creation of the remaining lot after this piece is taken out.
Okay, this piece has to be taken out of 61A, I think.
Is that what you're, we're speaking to, the 61A designation?
No, it wasn't. That is one of the questions.
It will eventually, yeah. Prior to the commencement of construction, prior to pulling a building permit, we'll move forward with the 61A process. Generally, we don't do that until after we're through the full development of a project.
So right now, basically, all you're doing is just creating the lot.
So that it's, so that it's clear when we take out area from 61A, it's clear what area it is.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Do you entertain a motion? Will we not approve the plan?
They're approved.
They're approved, they're approved, not required plan.
We can call it as personal.
Yes, we endorse the plan, yes. Do we have a second?
Yes, sir.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, what was it concerned with respect to the assessors? Just curious.
What we found in some of the other A and Rs with AD make- these because they have so many, so much land, so many different parcels, that it creates conflicts with other existing lots. And by not showing the remaining land, it gets confusing when these are due. Let's see.
Next order of business, we have another A and R for JC Engineering, 786 County Road.
Good afternoon, Sam I. Melly with JC Engineering. This project is located at 786 County Road in West Wareham. Currently, there is an existing dwelling which sits on approximately three acres of land. We are looking to create two additional lots of lots, all which will have appropriate frontage and lot area in the MR30 zoning district.
Existing dwelling's going to remain, huh?
Yes.
What is the number of county road?
786.
Emmanuel, do you have any questions? Format of piece of paper? Is that format of piece of paper?
Yeah.
Any questions over here?
What is the existing foundation in Lot 3?
I'm sorry?
What is the existing foundation in Lot 3?
That's just remains of old stones, represented a foundation way back when.
Do you have spell check in your article?
Yes. Did we miss something?
On number 10, the wetlands doesn't have a B.
Ah, yes. Missed that one.
That's another thing, I'm a little wet. Any questions from the board? If you're happy. Any questions from the audience? Do you entertain a motion to endorse? Motion to endorse, second. Any discussion? All in favor? The format you guys use in this is kind of awkward. The title block is kind of a little path.
You prefer on the side?
It's not really up to standard, you know, you have no scale, well, the scale's on there, but it's not what we normally see in a format. We might want to clean it up and come on the next one.
Mr. Chairman, does he like to go down?
Yes, it is. Here you go.
Next order of business, special permit site plan review for Borrego Solar, 64 Farm of the Market. Farm of the Market.
Mr. Chairman, since there are not four members of the board here, the special permit can't be issued. So I would suggest you continue the hearing.
If I may, so this actually doesn't require a special permit, it's just site plan application. I don't know if that makes a difference on the quorum.
Site plan review is a special permit under the zoning regulations of Wareham.
Okay.
What else, what else we have for business? We're going to discuss zoning articles. If you want to hang around for...
Ken, can you open the hearing, but just not take any testimony?
Yeah.
So you, yeah, so you don't have to advertise it again. Yeah, just announce the hearing is being opened for Borrego, that's all.
Right.
Read the notice, if you got the notice, Mike could read.
Is this the same one as before, as before?
No, it's different.
No.
We am planning board will hold a public hearing February 11th, 2019, at 7:00. Room 230, Wayans Multi-Serv Center, Marion Road. We consider petition 2-19 for a special permit, site plan review for requirements of Article 5, Section 590 of the Wayans zoning bylaw for Borrego Solar Systems Incorporated. 55 technical drive, Lowell mass, seeking construction of three megawatt solar array in energy storage within the 11-acre portion of a large 111-acre site located on 64 Farm to Market Road, Wayans Mass, Assessors Map 106, Lot 1002, in I-60 zoning district.
So, one final question before a continuance. Does Wareham have the opportunity for a member to miss a meeting and read the minutes and still participate, or no, we lose the?
No, we have a muller.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know.
Wait, no, you don't, or no?
We do. So, so one of the members who is missing, either Mike King or George Barrett, could listen to the minutes of the meeting and come back with the, and vote as an active member.
If that's acceptable, the board, I think we're okay with that.
Well, next meeting?
No, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to vote at the next meeting, but it's gonna...
I would if we did.
If you vote tonight, they can put their...
Well, d-d... No, you can't vote unless you have the...
I wouldn't be here next meeting, so you're gonna need both of those guys to be here.
You have to be here at the next meeting, because...
Oh, so they're not gonna...
You won't have four at the next meeting, so you'd have to be the 25th. The 25th is, is not marked in the, it's the...
First meeting in March.
It's the 11th of March.
Is this where we miss?
George wrote in on the calendar that he would not be here tonight. I didn't check the calendar. But if Mike King had been here, it would have been, okay. So you won't be here the 25th.
Correct.
So, so the safest would be to go to March 11th.
That's fine, I think as long as you guys have opened and can continue, and we can work with Charlie on the peer review over the next couple of weeks, and hopefully come in on the, was it the 11th?
Yep, March 11th, yeah.
And do the full presentation, and we'll see where we go from there. I think we know what you guys want, so.
Sign extensions.
Sure.
Are the revised plans that you emailed me about, are they still something that you have to submit?
Yes. So the revisions are generally minor. I don't know if I can speak to it or not, but generally, we're just shifting north to accommodate a conservation commission request.
Okay.
We didn't want to submit them until we got some feedback from the board, or if there was any tonight, but now that we know there's not...
You really can't act on something you can't see. I haven't seen them anyway, so there was no point in me trying to do a review on a plan that's going to be modified, so.
I think in terms of the design, it's a slight shifting of the layout. The stormwater won't be revised, it'll be the same stormwater report, I believe, I can advise if that changes, but, and I, do you have a copy of the materials now, or?
I have a copy of the original ones, but it didn't make any sense to review it, and I only got them last Tuesday. I was out of town on Wednesday. You emailed me on Thursday, wanted to know if it was going to be ready for tonight, and you said it was going to be changed, so I didn't bother with it.
Yeah, no, I apologize, we had submitted on the 17th, so I'm not sure why the disconnect and the delay in you getting the files.
I don't know. I only got them then, I have submitted an estimate of cost since then, but if you haven't submitted the actual plans to the board that you really want them to review, I suggest you do that, so that it'll be ready for them to review as well as myself on the next meeting.
Would it be possible to have it go through the peer review prior to that next meeting, though, so that we can hopefully address any comments and come to the March 11th meeting with the full information?
As possible.
I think the, the board should have the opportunity to review that, though.
Absolutely, yeah.
I would be fair to the board, you know, you're having a peer review with Charlie, and we, the members of the board, have no idea what we're looking at.
You know, we would absolutely be submitting the plans to the board as well, as part of that. I guess I was just hoping that the peer review could happen during this time period before the 11th, rather than coming to the 11th and then starting the peer review.
That's, that's not a problem, that's, I do that routinely, anyway. It's just that they need to have the opportunity to see what the review is.
Absolutely, yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, but I think we won't have the, we will have quorum issues on the 25th, right? So we'll submit the plans as soon as they're ready, so that the members can have them prior to the 11th, and then on the 11th will be the first meeting of the board with a full quorum.
Right. Let's hope.
Required quorum, we won't have a full...
Required quorum, yes.
No spring break trips. Thanks, everyone.
All right.
Thank you.
You want to sign?
Did you vote to continue the hearing?
Oh, we voted to continue.
Do you entertain a motion to vote to continue on March 11th?
So...
Yep, second. What day is it?
Today's Monday. I'm retired.
Exactly 30 days.
Moving right along here, Bob. Next order of business, any other business? Okay. Discussion of zoning articles for Springtown meeting. Public hearings and articles scheduled for February 25th. Any one of you guys gentlemen going to be here on the 25th, huh?
Yeah, do you want to change that date? We can change the date of the articles. I think we give us enough time to, or to notice appropriately. It really should be March 11th, or the, again, the 25th.
Of March?
Of March. Town meeting is in April. You're going to be probably behind on being published, so we'll probably have to present the board's recommendation on Florida town meeting. That's what Claire was talking about, trying to change this around so we wouldn't have to be making the recommendation on Florida town meeting. Maybe have it, have it been published in the, in the warrant.
Mark, you're going to be in, you'll be here for the 11th?
Yes, sir.
Emmanuel, you'll be at 11th also?
Yes.
Yes. And we're assuming that...
God willing.
We're assuming the other two gentlemen will be here.
Right.
If I put this in my calendar in advance, I'll probably make it two. That's a good plan.
Is a, is a hearing scheduled for the zoning articles?
Well, that's what we're just, are just telling you. So it's scheduling it for March 11th.
Oh.
Does that work with Claire's schedule, or with the schedule Claire gave us?
It'll, it'll work with town meeting, you'll have done your duty before town meeting.
It says Thursday, March 7th, last date to publish entire warrant.
So it won't be published in the warrant, that's what I'm saying, it'll be, you'll have to make the recommendation on Florida town meeting. We can create a handout, write a handout, given out.
At town meeting?
At town meeting as well.
Always gives people, you know, paper to sketch on and...
I think that was a point that... Right? All right. Chairman, please. I think that was a point Claire was trying to make, is that we don't want to be handing people out, handing stuff out to people at town meeting to review and to make decisions on related to zoning changes. To hold the hearings beforehand, the public carries.
Will be held beforehand, and there will be recommendations done beforehand.
When will the, when will the vote be taken?
Won't be published in the warrant, is what the difference would be.
Okay, and when will the vote be taken for, for that by the board, to move the articles forward, either whether they approve them or not?
For the 11th. March 11th. And Monday, April 22nd is when the town meeting, the business portion of town meeting will actually be in place.
If there would be no media, like, on the 22nd of the Planning Board to endorse or not endorse bylaw changes, correct? This is what's happened previously, you know, meetings at 4:00, and that's, that's the issue, with a handout going forward to the people coming to town meeting, and that's what they're trying to rectify.
Well, you have to try to change, to make a difference.
No, I don't know about that, but, anyhow, that's just my two cents on this.
I'm going to get around it, we're off to schedule a special meeting.
If you want, we can schedule one for the 4th of March.
I won't be here, I'm going that period, I'll be back on the, I'm going from the 25th to the 8th, but...
See, if we, if we publish on the 21st and the 28th... We can hold a hearing on the, on the 7th.
The 7th of April?
The 7th of March. Because we have to have 14 days before... And the next publication we have, unless we spend more, we printed notice in the standard times, which is much more expensive. We, we don't need a super majority, so although we'd have, Mark and Emmanuel wouldn't be here.
Mark, when you coming back?
20... Yep, 26th.
Could we meet before the 25th? Are you here?
I have to wait for procedure on the 25th.
Problem is, we need 14 days of public notice before the hearing.
This is actually working in your favor, you can put up your electronic sign wherever you want right now. It's like you have one and only opportunity.
I'll change that.
If that's the best we can do?
The last day to submit articles for the warrant, if we were going to have it published, would be February 19th, which would be next Tuesday, which is... Which would be impossible to do, to have the public notice and the hearing. Uh, we can have an article, we can have articles put in the warrant. But we would not be able to hold a hearing on those as required by state law. So it, we're up against an impossible schedule.
Well, it makes it even worse if, if we change two words in that article right off the bat and then you've got a, a real mess in your hands.
Right, so we gotta be careful about which articles we carry forward if we're ready.
Well, how does this, uh, let me make sure I understand this, if you don't get it in by the nineteenth for the finance committee to review, then you can't move forward with the March seventh. I don't think you can skip this February nineteenth requirement, can you?
No, there have to be articles that include in the warrant, they could be placeholder articles which has been done before and requires the, uh, the handout at town meeting. Uh, we may be able to do it in a different way, get some, uh, broader outreach with, uh, online or, uh,
Facebook? That was just a joke.
I would, I would suggest that we're stuck in the same pattern that we've had previously because of schedule. Uh, this would be an excellent reason for charter change.
We need fourteen days of notice on this year of public hearing.
That's correct.
So you can't do anything before the twenty-fifth that worries. That gives us the fourteen days. And I'm out of circulation with it.
Although we, um, we may not be published in the warrant, we can, uh, maybe this is where we publish our own versions of the articles as they're approved or recommended from the public hearings. Maybe that's a bad idea. But I think we have to get out the word as to what the, uh, the text is gonna be that we present to town meeting. And even, and having it in the town clerk's office and saying it's available at, at town clerk is not sufficient. To really get it out into a broader audience.
Okay. So this, so we're working from the eleventh forward now. So after the eleventh, we can publish our own version or hand it out the night of the town meeting.
Correct.
Those are our only two choices.
Really?
Mr. Moore, now it's probably giving us some time to help us hand out, help us pass our handouts. I bet you know, I can hide places here. Let me just. When did?
You got those, what, four weeks ago? Then there was another one handed. The solar one came out, what, two weeks ago? You weren't here. So it's, it's kinda, everything's compressed. You know? I'm not pointing fingers or anything, I'm just making a, a, an observation. So, but you know, you're getting them and you have other business and you have to work on those. And then you're swept into it. So, you know, you're swept into the timetables for town meeting. It's like you should be getting them this time for the fall. Do you?
Oh, I, I think the, the worst, the worst thing we can do is push these out till the fall time meeting. I know nobody wants to hear that, but that's an option we haven't even discussed. And here we go, and it gives us plenty of time.
Well, to me, three of us can't make a decision here tonight, we have to wait till the eleventh to get a majority here to make that decision. So there's nothing to be decided here.
I, I think we're just jabbing for a, uh, a direction.
Yeah. The junk and the sign, I think the, our biggest one was the solar bylaws that we didn't really wanted to chug through here, right?
Well, we wanted to get the, uh, articles that have been, been, uh, previously proposed and, uh, sitting. Waiting, which is the unregistered vehicles and outdoor storage. And the signed bylaw. Wanted to get those ones advanced. And then site plan review and solar energy. Were ones that you had, uh, thought were important.
Re- remind me, we, we had not, we, this is the third time we're look, I thought we had agreed upon these things, boy, I guess we didn't take an official step.
Well, the official step is actually the board of selectmen who actually, uh, put, uh, are, isn't, are in charge of putting the articles on the warrant. And we didn't know which articles they'd be putting on the warrant. We won't know exactly until tomorrow.
Are you asking from our last meeting, Manuel? We, we just whittled down the list and said, these are the four we're going to put on. Now we can announce the public hearing for these four. So that's what tonight was supposed to be, was to, right, was to announce fourteen days in advance the public hearing. Well, you want the majority to vote for that.
Cause we had made all the adjustments, we had revised and, you know, we'd gone through them pretty thoroughly and. So, so may I ask, when, when do you advertise then, Friday?
Yeah, they're advertised on Thursday.
Thursday. And, um, what's that, wearham week?
Right, when the wearham week comes out. That's our standard.
Then you need fourteen days. Calendar days.
Yes. Prior to the, uh, hearing.
Right, so.
And that can be.
Be advertised for the hearing of, on March eleventh.
Right.
Then hopefully votes and then the decision to to put a special advertisement, push it off to the fall, or hand out a piece of paper at the town meeting.
Right.
Two choices.
That's seven.
What does the opposition do, a special advertisement?
Cost? It's like three hundred dollars.
How much?
Wait, but we got all this tax money from the past.
I was just gonna say, we got plenty of money now.
Yeah.
Our coffers are overflowing.
I haven't seen it yet.
It's coming, it's coming.
When we watched the news this morning, there was an article on edibles. These edible products. I don't think, I don't think you guys are using your mics tonight.
We got the mics in the usual place.
I didn't want anyone to hear that anyways, so. Affecting hard times.
I'm talking to them though.
Okay.
Uh, we'll, we'll find out tomorrow night what the, uh, what articles the selectmen put on the warrant. We can proceed with the public hearing on all the articles you have before you now. But I can't say that for sure that all of them will be on the warrant. Since that's the control of the, the board of selectmen. That's a problem.
Can we vote by telephone?
No.
Participate.
You can participate by phone if you've pre-arranged it.
With whom?
With the chairman of the board.
And the, but even, with the twenty-fifth, with the meeting on the twenty-fifth help? We've already missed the dates.
No, we'd have to vote tonight, yeah, we couldn't do it the twenty.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have to vote for the public hearing tonight, we don't have a quorum.
Well, it says the twelfth the selectmen should officially close the warrant. What does that, what does that mean to us? So the selectmen can say, hey, we can hold off another week? No. Looks like we're, looks like we're heading towards the fall.
I think that's there cause the town halls close on Fridays, right?
Guys, please, the Friday. So you guys are on the forty work week, right?
I work more than forty hours a week.
Well, that's cause you like to hear.
You guys are fine.
You wanna move on this side of the bridge, right?
I do. No, you don't.
We don't have any wind towers, well, we, we have wind towers and.
We can have, you can have a couple of arms that hurt.
You guys can keep them. They're used. I don't know, Ken, I don't know what to tell you, you know, we, we can't really, the three of us can't make that decision.
Right. So, why, why don't we see what happens tomorrow night? If you give me the go-ahead, I'll advertise for the, uh, March eleventh. We'll have enough time to, uh, hold a hearing. And, uh, depending on what you, uh, what you have as articles in the warrant, you can proceed in accordance either move on them.
Can we do this, we're not, we're not official. We're only three, how can we? How, how do we do this?
You're a quorum right now.
That's enough to move forward with the advertising?
Yes.
Well, to me it makes sense, I mean, it's minimal cost to advertise, right?
Yes.
My recommendation, Mr. Chairman, would be to advertise it, whether, we can pull it off on the eleventh or not, just to be determined. But if we don't advertise it, we won't even have an opportunity to.
We don't advertise, right, then we're definitely in the fall.
Yeah. The only reason I would say to hold back from advertising is if we know somebody's not gonna be here on the eleventh right now. There's nobody in the book that's not.
No, there's nobody in the book that says they won't be here on the eleventh. I would, uh, there, there are two options here for the notice. One, you can proceed with all four articles, I believe there are four, to, uh, to hold a hearing on. Or wait until you find out tomorrow night what the board of selectmen put on the warrant. In which case, it could be a reduced hearing if they don't put them all on.
But I guess the three of us tonight, we don't need to make this decision. The twenty-fifth, you can execute the advertisement for the eleventh. So we don't have to decide on the advertisement, we can just verbally, in my absence, I, I would say move forward the advertisement on the twenty-fifth. And just wait for the other two members to execute it, that'll give you your fourteen days, right?
No, I have to, I have to put it in on the fourteenth, I have to put it in on this Thursday for publication on the twenty-first. And the twenty-eighth.
Public hearing on the eleventh? Eleven days in March.
We have to advertise it twice, at least two weeks prior to the public hearing. Has to be in the newspaper, in two publications at least two weeks prior to the public hearing.
Right, so the twenty-fifth of February is two weeks prior to the public hearing.
That's only if you hold the, you're doing it so that you do it on a normal planning board night, right?
Yeah.
Instead of another night.
Yeah, cause we won't have a quorum before then. I won't be here on the twenty-fifth, Manuel won't be here on the twenty-fifth. I won't return to the sixth, he's not returning to the eighth, so we can't, there's no other option for us to.
I'm wrong.
March eleventh is the only time you're gonna be next available for a hearing.
But you can't wait till submit it to the paper till the twenty-fifth, you gotta get it into them in the way that they want it so they can get it published. That's what I think what Ken is saying. Hmm. You don't have to wait till the twenty-fifth to say you're gonna vote on a public hearing.
Why would we be here on the eleventh, shooting for a publication on the twenty-fifth right now? That's gonna be, we're within that two-week window as it is, being here tonight.
No, no, it's because of when it's actually published, it's not published on today. It has to be published in the paper and that happens on Thursday. It has to be in the week before you get the publication.
This Thursday.
Official requirement, one week of public notice?
No, two.
Two, two notices, fourteen or seventeen.
But if we vote tonight on the eleventh for a public hearing on the twenty-fifth, we're right at two weeks right now.
But it wouldn't be published as of now.
It would be published on the thirteenth?
No, it won't be published, now it won't be published until the twenty-first.
Right, cause we're pushing it off to March eleventh.
Right.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to educate myself here.
No, that's the earliest, that's the earliest it can be published.
Having, being able to vote for a public hearing on the twenty-fifth. We have enough bodies to do it, but how are we gonna do it anyways? It didn't give us the two weeks we needed.
No, you can vote to have the public hearing and it's up to Ken to set the time in accordance with the regulation for, for notice. You could vote tonight to establish a public hearing on the eleventh.
But we wanted the public hearing on the twenty-fifth.
Well, you can't have it on the twenty-fifth, you're not gonna be here.
Yeah, but then we put out this agenda to have it on the twenty-fifth.
Agenda doesn't mean anything, you can change that.
But there was.
There was the hope it would happen that way, but it's not.
What I'm saying is I'm still, I'm still not understanding that being here on February eleventh gives us sufficient time to notify for the twenty-fifth.
No, it doesn't because you can't publish today.
So when were you gonna hold the public hearing? It was always gonna be on March eleventh then.
That's what it'll have to be, is March eleventh.
Well, that's the only thing it could have been from tonight.
That's right.
Okay, but it, I was, I guess I'm being misled by the, the, the agenda here, cause it says public hearing on article scheduled for February twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I didn't read it carefully enough.
Okay, so, alright, so it's just a, it's just a calculation error then, so this would be March eleventh regardless of us having a quorum here tonight. Which would have missed these deadlines, okay. No, so smart.
Ken, who are the sponsors of these four articles?
The sponsors of the, uh, of the unregistered vehicles in the front yard is the, uh, building commissioner.
Okay.
The signed bylaw is the board of selectmen. And the other two, site plan review and soar are the planning board.
See, Mark, the, the worst thing about this whole thing is, is everybody's articles and we gotta worry about all the other logistics to get this thing done.
Well, is, is the front yard junk storage bylaw, which you've talked about a couple of times now, is, is that, the language of it been reviewed by David and is he happy with that, the way that it is?
Yes, this is his language.
From when it was discussed at the last meeting, everything's okay now?
Yes. It is not subject to, uh, there were a couple of, of small changes that were made.
Why, why can't the selectmen have a public hearing for these two articles here?
Uh, they can, but you have to have, as the planning board has to have, hold a public hearing under state law.
And this.
So the, the wording, I think, Charlie, you're right, I mean, the wording can get into the warrant without change the way it looks right now.
Well, all I'm thinking is that, so long as everybody who's, you've got two sponsors of articles here that are not sponsored by the planning board. So I was just wondering whether they're happy with the language that you've already discussed and talked about at length, I think. Uh, the signed bylaw, it got changed last time, have they seen it since then?
Um, I don't know.
Yeah. Cause it would, it would be good to avoid having the same issue that came up last time of making changes that never get to the town clerk until the eleventh hour, which is what Claire's concern was. So you, you can hold, in my view, just thinking about the, the March eleventh, if everybody's comfortable with the language, you vote on the eleventh, the language, and that's what gets published in your special notice, whatever you wanna do with a handout. And that's what you go to town meeting with. And then it's up to the planning board to make its recommendation whether to pass it or not.
Right, or just to pass it, not to change it.
But I would think that you, yeah, you would, I would think the planning board would vote on the eleventh whether they like the language of the bylaw. If, if you don't, then you recommend either further study or you. If, if you don't, then you recommend either further study or you, you vote that they not approve it. Rather than go through the exercise time and time and time again, and nobody knows which one is the right one.
I think those first two are the ones you, you would have, if you're going to have any public objection or comment on, it would be those first two. Which I believe for a 14-foot concrete barrier on all four sides of every piece of property.
Every, every person have their own castle.
Wall's very moral.
Couldn't help driving down Route 1 yesterday and seeing that chain in the middle of that highway, top of those Jersey barriers.
How about the solar bylaw? Didn't we discuss that to the point where the language is in pretty good shape?
It's in pretty good shape, but I think the implications of the SOR bylaw are not clear yet. And I was doing a little bit of a study on this on a 10-acre piece of land with the setbacks that would be required. And out of 10 acres, I was getting an acre and a half that would be available for construction of a SOR field. Which essentially, I think, makes it infeasible to proceed.
But, but that's only if it's against the residential.
And, and most of the land we're talking about is residential. So I think.
How many, how many acres do you need, like, per, per megawatt?
I'm not sure. I think that's where we want to do a little bit more study.
Because they're, they're doing a what, 3-point? What were they proposing tonight? 3.6?
Something around the 3.
And how many acres?
Three megawatts, 11 acres.
So they wouldn't be able to make that on a 10-acre piece of land with the, with this. So maybe that's the intent, is to prevent.
Maybe it doesn't belong there.
Well, that's the, the question. Rather than say, let's put up these, these significant barriers.
Are you worried about being challenged, not meeting the intent of the state law? Because this has already been designed for carbon, isn't it? That stole this life control?
Yeah. I wouldn't say steal, but we did borrow. The problem is that we're, we're up, we have a green communities designation that was based on our zoning the way it was. And if we change it and make it impossible to, to construct solar fields, we're on, we're potentially on the going to be losing 150-plus thousand dollars a year in green communities money for energy efficiency.
Well, who says you have to put something, put your designation into jeopardy? If you have to adjust it, maybe the 10 acres isn't something, but if it is, you know, most sounds like you don't put it on the public hearing list at all until you've ferreted it out.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It takes a little bit of, a little bit of study on this and see how, where it would apply and how it would apply to the area. And as to whether or not we want to say, just if we're going to find that it's, it prohibits solar fields in the, in the residential area, and that's what we want, why don't we just say that rather than?
That's what I've been saying all along. Put a big no in the bylaw. I, I think we're going down the slippery path giving up, giving up, giving up for this movement towards renewable energy. And no one is stopping to consider the cost. Both visually, emotionally to the communities, people have to look at the stuff, as well as economically, which is going to cost us a whole lot of money. So I, I acquiesce to, to your suggestions about limiting the setbacks to following a Carver example. That's fine. But to back off any more than that, I think we are simply giving up. At least, I, I, I would hope we don't want to give up have our forests removed. Have everybody from their homes now looking at, at, at the glass out instead of trees and, and nature. What it does to the wildlife? I mean, we're this new green initiative that we heard of, this nonsense we heard about recently from, from Congress.
The New Green Deal.
Pardon?
The New Green Deal.
The New Green Deal. We, we have to take a stand on what we want our community to look like, to be like, and fight the town and fight the state. I mean, I would suggest putting no in the residential. I know there are reasons, you mentioned that there isn't enough industrial land, or we need to have space for industrial. But I see beautiful properties about to be destroyed with this movement towards this solar ground-mounted facilities. So I acquiesce to the limitations that I understand that we cannot have a big no in our zoning, which I regret, in, in the residential sections. And if we must allow it, I think that the Carver, the Carver model is a limit. I, I said, I, I strongly am opposed to, to softening that up.
You're accurate, except when you say you're not allowed to put a no in. In fact, you can put a no in, as long as you allow it in some other zoning district.
Yeah, I didn't say I wasn't allowed. It was, I acquiesced to your suggestion, but.
There are, there are options to put solar up other than residential.
Yes, there are.
So, so what the outcome of this conversation was, I think with a little further study, being the driver here, this really should put the shot to the fall. Would you recommend it?
Yes, that's what I'm recommending. Unless you want to put in something to say, follow Manuel's recommendation and say no to make it obvious. I think we have to study this to see what the impacts have.
No, you were saying, we just said it was a 10 acres for 3.6 megawatt or 11. But you have to have 50%. It can only be 50% of the lot, so you'd need 22 acres, right? Isn't that how the law reads?
No, that's what the, what the recommendation was.
That's correct.
Right now, there's nothing in the law.
No, but if you say that, right, so then you already have your 200-foot buffer pretty much. Because you get another 10 acres that go for our pretty close. But I, I understand what you're saying, and I think the selectmen, watching them from my armchair, they, they had some concerns regarding the solar bylaw.
What, what was their concern?
Well, he said, well, we got to look at this a little closer and, you know, they didn't really go into a lot of specifics. They, they were worried about the green community designation. What'd you say, it's 150,000?
Well, we're getting 205 this year and potentially 150 to 180,000 each year. Yeah.
I think we have to take a stand. This is the planning board. I think we have to take a stand on what's right for the community, for the physical ambience of it, and I that's our responsibility. Our responsibility is not to chase dollars. Yes, we have to be conscious of it, of course. But, but I, I've heard time and again, these presentations, money, 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 money. Where are we, what do we want for this town? That's my view, folks.
Are you saying there's enough reservation from the selectmen that they probably won't put this warrant out?
They're going to discuss it.
Well, we keep on kicking this can down the road.
I, I, no argument here.
That's what they're doing, is kicking it down the road. When they finally get something, it says, okay, we finally agree with something. It's going to be too late. There's going to be nothing left. Everything's going to be eaten up. We've been reacting towards solar farms for the last three or four years. Every time another one comes up, we react a little bit more. Oh, jeez, we should do something. They just kick the can a little bit more. Another one comes in, kicking some more. Another one comes in, nothing happens. I think Emmanuel got a point. Let's take a stand and go for it. If they don't like it, challenge it, take it to court.
Yeah, I, I, I'll fight it. I'm fed up. I'll go to the state. Let them redo some research on all this stuff. They folks, I've spent a lot, hundreds and hundreds of hours trying to educate myself on this whole energy business. And ignorant as I am, at least I have an inkling of the stupidity coming out of government.
Well, if you, if you notice, the government changes their philosophy every six months. It's a different program. Different program means more revenue for somebody. Somebody's going to make a lot of money. That's the name of the game. The bottom line is green dollar bills in somebody's pocket. That's the bottom line.
Where, where's all that money come from? From us.
Your pocket, my pocket?
From the increased, from the increased costs that you're going to be incurring.
They're doing us a favor, right?
I think, this is my opinion. I, I'm not opposed to pushing this off to the fall, except I want to open this up for public hearing. If, if these seats are empty during the public hearing, then then it's a hard no, as far as I'm concerned. But if there is some, some true concern in this community, then again, people have to show up to these planning boarding meetings or deliver the results of it. So I, I, I feel that we owe it to ourselves to get some to have some opportunity to hear public input.
You can do that, you can do that without a public hearing. You can advertise it in the way him weak. You're going to be discussing the solar bylaw. But to, to inject a public hearing in it before you're ready to have something to really present to the public, I think, is you're ending up with the same issue that you had last spring. It's too early for that. If, if these other things, I was not aware that, that you're risking a federal designation and risking losing grant money or statement or whatever it is on the basis of language that was going to go into the solar bylaw. So it seems to me that we need to know what that is, what criteria it is that we would be jeopardizing the, a designation with. But
Is Carver a designation?
Nobody knows what that is right now.
No, it's not.
Because they chose not to be, or?
I don't know. I don't know the, the internal workings of the town Carver. That's why they did not do the green communities.
Mac, you're not going to get this place full of people unless it's in somebody's backyard. Otherwise, they're not going to show up. You, you've seen that already. The last time we saw a room full of people, they were here concerned because there was a problem in their backyard. If it doesn't affect them, you're not going to get the public input. Just take a stand Emmanuel and let the chips where they fall.
Yeah. So I think your choices are either you can call a public hearing, wait, or wait to see what happens at the Board of Selectmen meeting tomorrow, what gets put on the warrant. And I can follow through with that, with that whatever gets put on the warrant to take to a public hearing. Or you can proceed with a public hearing on these and let the chips fall where they lie.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the way to go. We can sit and debate. We can debate all night. We're not going to accomplish nothing. We'll be in the same place. That's where we're going to go, Ken, I think. That's what I feel. Emmanuel, you feel the same?
Yeah.
Good, the three of us.
What's the language going to be?
We'll go with the language that we got drafted up, well, Ken has drafted up now. You know, it has some bite to it. We can always go back and tweak it if it doesn't quite work, but we've got to start with something. Start kicking that can.
One thing I would, I'd like to make changes in this are based on input I received from conservation agent Dave Pichette, who made some suggestions on the on the protection of well ends as part of the the bylaw.
Charlie, have you read, do you, have you read the, the article in question? The proposed?
No, I haven't seen the final document. No, I know what you talked about and.
No, because, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I know what the board discussed the last meeting, but that's, that's the only thing I know.
It'd be nice to get your reaction.
But if, if there are situations that involve state designation and so forth, it would be nice to know what those stipulations are so that you can either work your way around them or, or do something that will protect that designation. Also, it'd be good to know what David's concerns are, what he wants to inject into it too. But to try and do all that on the night of a public hearing, which you're not going to see the information before then, is, is a little bit difficult for you guys to figure out, it would seem to me. Unless you get it as a handout, so, you know, everybody can see it beforehand and be prepared to discuss it that night. Can you do that, Ken?
Yeah. Sure.
Well, how do we find out? There's no time. I mean, Charlie makes a good point, as usual. What would be the consequences of endangering the state?
Green communities designation.
Community designation.
What's that imply, Ken?
Well, they reviewed our zoning and determined whether or not it met their criteria for.
So it means you can't make any changes in it? Subsequent to their giving a designation?
It doesn't make any sense. We already gave zone mobile later.
What's that mean? You're stuck with what they have approved and given you a designation for, and they're going to give you money for, but you can't make any subsequent changes to that going forward?
Well, I think, I would think anything we, we change, would it be under review by the state again?
Well, it always is from the Attorney General, but.
No, it'd be from the green communities provision. Here we are. That was part of the, part of the criteria to review.
No comment.
So if the selectmen say put on the warrant, we'll publish what we have right now. Put it for public hearing on the 11th. And then maybe somebody who is subject to our experiment green initiative can be here on the 11th to tell us why we can't do it.
Yeah, we could probably get somebody in on that.
And then we could pull the plug at the very last minute, the 11th hour, on the 11th and say. You vote maybe now or after? Yeah. Yeah. Not to recommend it, we're just going to go to Hard Knocks for residential.
The other, the other potential situation is that the Board of Selectmen do not put it on the warrant tomorrow night. In which case, you can hold the hearing, but it won't be for this.
This town meeting.
This town meeting.
Sure.
You'd have to hold another hearing before the next town meeting as well.
That's fine. We won't even know if we would recommend change unless we have a public hearing. Nobody shows up, then we have no recommended change. Just take it in the fall.
Sounds good, Ken.
Hi. You want to schedule a public hearing on March 11th then, for the the zoning articles?
Yep.
All four?
You want a motion on that way?
Yep.
Well, do we want all, if the selectmen choose not to put it on there, do we want to do a public hearing on the 11th or just focus on what we need to focus on on the 11th? If they, if they disapprove the solar, and we only have three, then let's just hear a public hearing on the three, and we'll worry about the solar later on. We're, we're going to be wasting energy. We're going to be consuming time on the 11th on a solar issue that's not going to go to town meeting. So I would recommend we just push it off till after town meeting hold a public hearing in May or June.
If they don't put it on the warrant, then?
If they don't put it on the warrant. If they do, then we'll consume time talking about it.
All right.
I, I'm, that's my opinion. I don't know how you gentlemen feel.
Yeah, sure.
Need a motion on that, Ken?
Yeah, motion.
Intend a motion to.
Do all that? Okay, second.
Yes, Emmanuel.
Before the 11th, though, I, I, to pick up on Charlie's point, could, can we find out what is it that might jeopardize the green designation? what is it that might jeopardize the green designation?
Green communities designation.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
That's a good point, yes.
We're going to hold a hearing on the site plan review?
Yeah, we will hold it unless the Selectmen don't put it on the warrant.
If they do, we're prepared to do that. What's the basis?
Your mic is off.
My question is, what's the basis for holding a hearing on site plan review? What document are you looking at?
Document that the planning board reviewed in January. That was prepared by Emmanuel and submitted to the board in the first meeting in January. And had a series of mostly minor changes.
Okay, that one. Okay, now I understand.
Yeah, not a significant, the only significant change was the pre-application meeting.
Article 15.
Yes. I think that's benign. I think that's, I'm hoping that the Selectmen will accept corrections that make sense.
Could you make a note to change that, a butters list requirement from 200 to 300?
I did make that note.
Okay. Just nitpicking you.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Motion to adjourn?
Did you vote on this, the public hearing first?
Yeah, we did. We had a.
A resounding?
Mark made the motion, the manual seconded.
Second, yes. All in favor?
Aye. All right, now you can do the adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
You all set, Ken?
Yeah, all set. Thanks.
Motion on tables to adjourn. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Night, Bob.